May I have a motion to resume, I'm sorry, to end executive session?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Dennis?
I move that we adjourned executive session at 5:44 PM and resume public session.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Gary Dennis and seconded by Mrs. Nikki Porter to end executive session at 5:44 and resume public session. Is there any discussion? All right, there being no discussion. Mr. Dennis, is your motion correct on the screen?
That is correct.
Okay, board members, please vote. And as board members vote, I just want to let everyone know, we said it earlier, but Ms. Washington is actually out sick today, so we wish her well, and we'll miss her this evening, but we will carry on. All right? All right, the vote is six yes, one not present. The motion passes. We will now move on to our inspirational moment. So we have, okay, so it was going to be Ms. Washington, but Ms. Williams is going to introduce this evening's guest.
Good afternoon, everyone. So it is my honor to introduce Mr. Benjamin Jackson, who is now, who is now in his fifth year as principal at Forest Lake Elementary and his ninth year serving both Forest Lake and Richland School District Two. Under his leadership, Forest Lake continues to thrive as a place of excellence, innovation, and community. Richland Two, please help me welcome Mr. Benjamin Jackson.
All right, good evening. So Honorable Chairperson Nash, esteemed members of the Board, Superintendent Dr. Moore, Senior Leadership, and distinguished guests, it is a true honor to be here this evening representing Forest Lake Elementary School. So I know I got 30 minutes, so I decided to type it so it won't take so long, but I'm deeply grateful for the opportunity to share this remarkable work taking place within our school community, work that reflects the unwavering dedication of our students, staff, and our families. Forest Lake is a proud Title I school serving approximately 653 students in the Forest Acres community. Our students represent a broad and vibrant area from Percival Road to Shakespeare Road, which is behind Columbia Mall. We are equally proud to welcome families from across Richland Two through our school choice program, further enriching the diversity of our school spirit. Just today, I had the privilege of celebrating our first nine-week celebrations with our students. We recognize our student leaders who served through Safety Patrol, Student Council, our news show, and Beta Club. Our Beta Club just returned from Charlotte today from attending the National Beta Regional Leadership Summit, where we placed for Nationals in three competitions today, right? We're also incredibly proud of one of our students, Maya Vijay, who was named a leadership representative today at the summit. All 15 of our students qualify for Nationals today, which is in Nashville, Tennessee. So, I know we're going to talk about budget, well, y'all, but, so we got to figure out a way to get them to Nashville. But this is why our school is recognized as a 25-26 Beta School of Merit. Adding to our celebrations, the state's best, a program led by the state's newspaper to recognize excellence across the Midlands, announced Forest Lake Elementary as the bronze winner of the best elementary school for 2025. Y'all can clap. And perhaps the most exciting of it all, I'm thrilled to share that Forest Lake Elementary has been named a 2025 Blue Ribbon Lighthouse School. Now, through this rigorous Blue Ribbon School of Excellence National Assessment process, we met the standards for excellence in all nine performance areas, reflecting our ongoing commitment to student achievement, quality teaching and learning, leadership, and our connections with our families. With humility, as we continue this journey of excellence, I'm reminded of a quote by Henry Ford, who said, "Coming together is a beginning, keeping together is progress, and working together is success." At Forest Lake, we are proud to be working together every day to serve every kid. Thank you.
Wow, great job. All right, moving on to item 6.1, the consent agenda. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the consent agenda?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp?
I move to approve the consent agenda for the October 14, 2025 Regular Board Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Mrs. Porter. Is there any discussion? All right, Mr. Trapp, is your motion correct on the screen?
Yes.
All right, board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, one not present. The motion passes. Now we will move on, because we do not have any public participation, we will move on to items 8.0, and these are going to be items discussed in executive session. All right, item 8.1, student admission request into the district's adult education program. May I please have a motion on the student admission request into the district's adult education program?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Porter?
I move to approve the student admission requests into the district's adult education program for students number one through three.
Okay, the motion has been made by Ms. Porter. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Porter and seconded by Mr. Dennis. Is there any discussion? All right, Ms. Porter, is your motion correct?
Ma'am.
All right, board members, please vote. A remix. The vote is six yes, one not present. The motion passes. All right, we will now move on to item 8.2, employment recommendations and certified releases. May I please have a motion regarding employment recommendations and certified releases?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp?
I move to approve the employment recommendations and certified releases as presented, with the exception of employee 12 on page two.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Ms. Porter. Is there any discussion? Okay. All right, there being no discussion, we'll wait for the motion to appear on the screen. All right, the motion is on the screen. Mr. Trapp, is that correct?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
It needs to read... You got it? Okay, that is correct now.
Okay, board members, please vote. The motion is six yes, one not present. The motion passes. Is there another motion for item 8.2?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, I move to approve the employment recommendation for employee number 12 on page two.
Okay, the motion has been made by Ms. Williams to approve the employment recommendation certified, or the employment recommendation for employee number 12 on page two. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Williams and seconded by Mr. Dennis. Is there any discussion? Okay, there being no discussion, we'll wait for the motion to appear on the screen. All right, is that motion correct, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
All right, board members, please vote. The motion, sorry, the vote is five yes, one not present, and one abstaining. The motion passes. All right, moving on to item 8.2, I'm sorry, moving on to item 9.1, we are going to have our board reports and updates, and we're going to begin with the SESBA Region Update with Ms. Nikki Porter. Thank you. I think we have a presentation that'll be up there in a minute. No? Thank you. Perfect. All right, and I'm going to read off my notes, because I tend to be a bit verbose, so this will help us move. All right, so as Region Eight Director, I'm representing Richland One and Richland Two School Districts, and I'm pleased to provide an update on my work with SESBA in the committees and highlight essential upcoming opportunities for all of our board. That's an image from our recent federal advocacy conference there. All right, so I'll start with my legislative work. We had both a federal and state focus for this, and federally, I attended the recent conference where we met with staffers from Senator Graham and actually Congressman Joe Wilson's office to discuss our district needs and our federal-level bills that affect all public schools presented by COSBA. And I wanted to also share a big thank you to Congresswoman Sherri Biggs for setting up a Capitol tour for all of the South Carolina Board members. All right, for committee service and engagement, this is for the state level. We finalized the resolutions for the upcoming session, and I participated in an important EOC convening to ensure our state's accountability system is fair and accurate, particularly for our multilanguage learners. So this committee, I was asked to participate on as a representative from SESBA, and it went really well, and I stood, I was there as a representative from a board member in the state. I also concluded my service on the nominating committee. This year, we conducted a thorough vetting process for candidates, including the critical position of treasurer position on the board, and we're confident in the slate of nominees that will be presented at the delegate assembly. And so not only treasurer, it was also a number of regional director roles that will be presented to us as well this year. All right, some essential upcoming opportunities for you all. We have two key opportunities coming up. First, the Beyond the Basics Training on October 16, and we regional directors help shape the topics, so it's guaranteed to be relevant. It's an advanced session that you should definitely attend, and we kind of did like a brainstorming of concerns that all the regional directors had from their respective areas, and came up with good titles for this session, so I'm excited about it to see the response to it as well. We also have the Midlands Regional Advocacy Town Hall, which is Wednesday. I felt like that was Wednesday tomorrow, isn't it? Did I misprint that? I think I did. It's actually tomorrow's date, so I need to fix that. And so that is at the SBA Training Office, and here, they changed the format, so it's going to be like a town hall format, where we'll listen to all of the Midlands Board members and talk about things that are concerning us locally, and then brainstorm solutions to those issues. Delegate Assembly is on Saturday, December 6 through the 7th, which we voted on our representatives' last board meeting, and then February 19 through the 2nd, our annual conference. All right, and finally, please remember the Champion for Public Education Award. We have incredible partners in our communities, local residents, businesses, and organizations who deserve recognition for supporting Richland One and Richland Two. Please take the time to submit a nomination for a worthy champion, and we recently received that award, so it is that time again. You will need the board chair signature for this nomination, so I encourage all of you to think of someone. Also, another staff member that is helpful for this is Ms. Owens, so reaching out to her, she will help you if you need a synopsis of what that community partner does for the district. And I also have some tips for the application process that I feel like got us the top points that we had this year, so I can help you out with that as well. And this report will also be shared with Richland One, and they too had partners that won this award this year, so we hope to come out strong again. All right, lastly, feel free to contact me. So you can call me or email me for any assistance, and I would be glad to help you, and I've thoroughly enjoyed serving as your Region Eight Director. Thank you so much. And of course, I have to give credits to Carnival slides. Well, thank you so much. That was a great report, and I will send out to board members as well, just a reminder of all these things to be looking forward to, especially in the next, the ones that we have this week. All right, next coming up, we have a legislative update, this agenda item. We're going to have Mr. Dennis give us a legislative update. Mr. Dennis?
Thank you. First, I'm going to say this, my slides are not going to look that nice. So while they're being brought up, this is going to be a legislative update for the 2025-2026 session, and it was prepared by me, and it's pretty simple. But the session overview, there we go, so... So session overview, there's 162 educational-related bills introduced during this legislative session. Ten bills have passed, which leaves 152 remaining active or in committee right now. So we have 152 bills that will be coming up this session starting in January. Many of them carry over from 2025 session, and the tract of which bills that will pick up traction will become a lot clearer around January. The focus areas were teacher workforce, school safety, transparency, and funding equity. This thing hates me. All right, so of the 10 bills that passed, the H is for House, S is for Senate. House Bill 4187, that was Lexington County. That really doesn't bother us much, but one of the ones that definitely got us was the streaming of school board meetings. That's Senate Bill 77, and we'll be talking about that a little later today for a policy. And then Senate Bill 79, that was a non-certified teacher pilot program. That should help fill in some holes if need be. And then the likely timeline and legislative process of late 2025, early 2026, that's when the bills will be introduced, and hearings and modifications of the 2025 bills will likely happen. The committees of the House Education and Public Works and Senate Education, that's where they will start talking about it. And then in spring of 2026, that's where they'll put them on the floor. They'll either pass them or not. That's where they'll go to the conference committees and probably pass there. And that's where you all will hear about the landmark bills. Those are the bills that's actually going to be voted on and passed. Mid 2026, once passed and signed by the governor, that's where the implementation and planning will come down to the State Department of Education. They will also get it out to the School Board Association and the districts, and we will figure out how to implement those. And then late 2026, as we always see, that's when we'll find out what funding we're going to get or what we're not going to get for those bills. Bills on my radar right now were House Bill 3185, that's the Transparency and Integrity in Education Act. That's a parental pledge, and it's in committee. That's where parents will have to sign a pledge when they enroll their students into any district. And then House Bill 3216, that's the mandatory instructional recording. That's looking at putting cameras and recording all instructional areas in the classroom. In that bill, it looks like the hook is to the district for funding all that. So there's no funding right now in that bill that would help us out. So that's definitely one to look at. House Bill 3208, that's the grade inflation and uniform grading scale. That's where the South Carolina Department of Education will go through, and align all grades with standardized tests and removes extra credit, and that's kind of in committee. I do not see that gaining much traction, but it was very interesting read, so that's why I added it to my list to see what kind of traction it does get. House Bill 3240, that's the school board proxy vote ban. I haven't seen Richland Two do that since I've lived in the district, but it does prohibits trustees from delegating votes in committee. It's in committee right now, but the way it reads, it also might affect us if we are not here in person for a normal meeting. So I would want to get more clarity on that. And then House Bill 3470, not sure where that's going. That's the school district consolidation, and that would require one district per county, and that's currently in committee. And then one of the other big ones was House Bill 3236, Weapon Detector Systems in the Schools Act. It requires weapon screenings in all schools and athletic venues, and that's currently in committee. And there was no attached funding for that as well. That would be putting metal detectors in every school with no funding attached. So the summary and outlook of this, only 10 of the 162 bills passed, and then it goes into the January session. But that's pretty much what I got. If any of my colleagues definitely has any bills they want me to follow, let me know. Also attached on the board docs is every bill that's actually in committee. I had that printed out and put in there for everybody, and I'm pretty sure the public can get that too. Right, okay. So the public can have that as well. It's just a brief synopsis and everything going from there. During the school, during the school year in session, I will be following all that and letting you all know how it goes, and hopefully, we can get some funding for things if they do move forward. But that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I forgot to ask for your questions earlier, but are there any questions regarding this, anything for legislative? All right, we will move now on to item 9.3, a policy update, and I will be, I'll be sidekick to Dr. Franklin on this, where Ms. Washington's going to do it. And so we're going to be giving a policy update here. So, all right, so instead of thank you trustee Washington, Ms. Nash, all right, so board members were asked to submit policies they are interested in reviewing during the 2025-2026 school year. A policy revision timeline has been developed to guide through this work, and I think she actually has a slide. Does she have, okay, yeah, her timeline was in here, I think. If we can get that on the screen, I guess I got a little bit ahead of myself. Oh, I'm going to be the quicker person. Okay, okay, good. Okay, so there we have it. Okay, so there's the policy revision timeline that you see there before you, and in the table, you will see the name of each policy and the date on which the board will hold its initial discussion about that policy. These discussions will provide direction to the district administration regarding potential revisions. Please note that this timeline is intended as a planning guide and will be adjusted if higher priority agenda items require the board's attention. In addition to these policies listed in the table, district administration plans to bring forward the following groups of policies over the course of the next year. Policies impacted by the 2025 legislative session, which we just discussed some, other policies requiring content changes, and policies requiring editorial changes. Tonight, district administration will present one new policy proposal and three policy revision proposals. Dr. Marshall and Franklin, Deputy Dr. Marshall and Franklin, Deputy Superintendent, will present those policies. Dr. Franklin?
Thank you, Chairman Nash. Members of the board, Dr. Moore. The Policy Committee and District Administration present four policies for your consideration tonight. The first policy would be a new policy for our manual regarding live streaming of board meetings. It's a separate document. While he's pulling that up. During the 2025 legislative session, a law was enacted requiring school boards to livestream all board meetings that are subject to the provisions of the Freedom of Information Act, which we affectionately refer to as FOIA. For Richland II, this requirement extends to regular board meetings, special call meetings, agenda review meetings, committee meetings, workshops, work sessions, and retreats, as they are all subject to FOIA. Lastly, while the policy must be adopted by November 5th, implementation is not required until January 1st, 2026. I welcome your questions or feedback regarding the policy proposal.
Board members?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Dennis?
Yes, so, I know in here it's talking about our workshops and things of that nature. However, you know, we've done retreats in the past that's not here, so am I to take it that if we did something like that, we would have to live...
We'd still have to livestream.
Somehow live do it, and if they don't have that capability, then we would have to do the audio and then post it within two days, correct?
And so, our technology and communications team, there have been times when we've livestreamed from remote places. I'm not sure if it's as reliable to livestreaming from R2I2 or from a school, but that is something we'll have to practice and work out kinks before we're able to give a definitive answer.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Dennis?
So, I was also reading, if it went down, then we're supposed to kinda like stop and try to get it back up.
Correct.
One thing that I did see in there, and I thought that maybe we could do proactively, was not only during livestream, but we can also start an audio recording as well. So, if something does happen and we can't bring it back up livestream, we're already live audio, so we would have that, and we wouldn't have to stop mid. I mean, that's just maybe something to look at. I don't know.
Yeah, I believe we're covered, because we livestream and video record, and so in the event that our livestream goes down, we still have the capability to continue video recording.
Okay.
And make that available, which will take care of the audio you mentioned.
Copy. All right, thank you.
All right. And you will know that this is the model that was provided to all school districts by the School Boards Association, so where you see insertions and strike throughs, those are recommendations from district administration. I do wanna call your attention to the access to broadband section. Our district has been livestreaming board meetings for at least 14 years, and so we really felt that that wasn't applicable to us. All right, policy GCLE, unencumbered time. This policy and the two to follow are recommended policy revisions. This policy is being recommended for a revision based on action-taking during the 2025 legislative session. So, you recall about two years ago, the state legislature enacted a law requiring elementary teachers and special education teachers in specialized programs at all grade levels to receive 30 minutes of unencumbered time on each regular school day, where during the past legislative session, a proviso was included in the State Appropriations Act to extend this requirement to school nurses. And so, the draft revision that you see there inserts nurses in the policy, just as we do elementary teachers and special education teachers in specialized programs. I welcome your questions or feedback regarding the policy revision.
Board members? Any questions, comments, revisions? Okay?
Okay. The next two policies come as a result of some Read to Succeed changes. I'll start with policy IHAA, English Reading, Writing, Language Arts Education. Changes recommended in this policy reflect updates to Read to Succeed, including language referencing scientifically-based reading instruction, changing the grade levels addressed in the Reading Proficiency Plan from pre-K through 12 to pre-K through 5. And I believe that is it. You'll also note that in the bottom, at the bottom of the first page, we inserted the term literacy reflection tool. While the State Department refers to the document as a reading proficiency plan, we call it the literacy reflection tool, and so we wanted to insert that into the policy, because if you ask a teacher about, or a principal about the reading proficiency plan, they may say a what, but if you say literacy reflection tool, they know exactly what you're talking about. So, we wanted to make that clear in the policy. I welcome your questions and feedback.
Any questions or feedback, board members?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Dennis?
Yeah, so the IHA, English Reading, Writing, Language Arts Educational one. When I was reading through it, I didn't see anything that kinda goes to the multilingual learners. How does that affect them?
So, I'm gonna have to lean on our K5 elementary expert here, and the question was, how does it relate to multi-language learners? Are you speaking specifically to the plan?
The plan in there, I noticed nothing referred back to them, and I know we do have the MLL students, so I was wondering how that goes back and forth.
Good evening. They're included in the Tier 1 instruction that encompasses all students, but those students receive ML services through the lab and provide instruction through that manner. So, it's a Tier 1 initiative, but they're included with the Tier 1 classrooms. So, they receive what they receive in the Tier 1 classrooms, but also get support from our ML teachers. So, it wouldn't be included in it, I think that would be something different. It wouldn't be included in this policy, because it includes all students.
Copy. Thank you.
But we do have a policy that addresses multi-language students, though. A separate policy. All right, and the next policy revision proposal is ILBB, State Program Assessments. Changes recommended in this policy reflect updates also to Read to Succeed, and they include readiness assessments required in pre-K and kindergarten and reading screeners required in kindergarten through fifth grade. Additionally, district administration recommends two changes. One of them is clarifying that our assessment program is intended for students attending school in Richland II, so that's noted in the very first sentence of the policy. And then we also wanted to indicate that our assessment program includes both summative, those are the formal assessments we take that are mandated, and formative assessments that we take to inform instruction throughout the year. That statement is also in the first paragraph. Other than that, the rest of the policy aligns with what is in the model policy provided by the School Boards Association.
Board members, questions? Ms. Porter?
And for all of the assessments that are listed there, all of those are the required assessments?
They are.
Okay.
They are.
There's nothing extra?
No.
No.
And that's a great question, because there was a time where there were some assessments that were required, and then we did additional ones. We elected to do additional ones, and at this juncture, there are so many required that we don't elect to do any additional ones.
Board members, any more questions on that one? One more thing, sorry. Yep, Ms. Porter?
And I'm sorry, my screen is freezing up, but would we need to include the screener for MLLs here as an assessment, or is that listed somewhere else?
That may be in the ML part. I'll have to check that one, Mrs. Porter.
Okay. And just as it relates to the one that we mentioned earlier, the committee that I served on this year, it is reevaluating how some of those, how the students are assessed, and so it doesn't change their standards that they would be teaching. It just tells you what level they're on, and that tells you what kind of work needs to be done in the classroom. So, none of this would change for an MLL. Just giving some background as Mr. Dennis was asking that question.
Any more questions on that one? Okay, all right. So, next up, the final item from the Policy Committee this evening is a discussion on policy KF, Community Use of School Facilities. District administration will provide an overview of the policy, followed by a board discussion. Dr. Franklin?
Right, thank you, Madam Chair. So, for this policy, this is one of the policies that a board member or board members expressed an interest in discussing in order to provide district administration some feedback and insight to revisit the policy and then bring back some proposed changes. And so, the discussion, further discussion tonight, I will be assisted by some backup. I have Ms. Nancy Williams, our Senior Chief Communication, I'm sorry, Senior Chief Financial Officer, and Mr. Mark Hutton, our Senior Chief Operations Officer. And so, this is policy KF, Community Use of School Facilities, and the gist of it...
Dr. Franklin, I'm sorry, I was just gonna make a joke, you know, I was looking at social media, and you doing that little challenge under backup dancers, so you bringing in your... Because I thought that's what you were getting ready to go, and I'm like, go, Dr. Franklin, you go ahead with your backup dancers, okay?
We'll have to promise y'all to be my backup dancers.
And you promised to be the backup dancers.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Porter?
But when you have the backup dancers, that means you promised them something, so...
What do you want me to promise you? We promised to get you out by... Be quick and easy. All right, so y'all be my backup dancers, this will be quick and easy. You have to help me with that. All right, so policy KF, Community Use of School Facilities. So, this policy pertains to the use of school buildings and properties. So, the policy provides that, of course, it must be requested, and our system that we currently use for those requests is called Facilitron. Our Senior Chief Operations Officer does have the authority to waive or reduce fees for nonprofit organizations or organizations that are for the benefit of district-sponsored groups, clubs, or organizations. There is a fee schedule that we abide by. The district may also require these organizations to have district security present and/or Richland County Sheriff's deputies. The fee schedule does not include the fee for custodians, because we contract that service out, so that's done separately. In terms of fees being waived, they're waived for use of district facilities by organizations like PTOs, booster clubs, SICs, professional education organizations, et cetera. We will, however, as a district, under no circumstance be liable for injuries sustained by any person or any property of the person who is leasing the facility or renting the facility, which is why we do ask them to provide insurance coverage. So, that's the gist of the policy. We welcome your questions or your insights at this time.
Board members?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I do, I do have a question. You mentioned that it can be waived for nonprofits, the fee to use a facility. How do we determine which nonprofits will get it for free and which ones will actually pay a cost?
I'm gonna lean on one of my backup dancers.
So, in general, if you are a nonprofit, we also, in addition to looking at the type of organization, your status, we're also looking at the actual event, the type of event, and then we're looking closely at that documentation, and then we follow a very structured approach in determining the percentage discount. So, normally, a nonprofit organization would get a 50% waiver, and then it just would depend upon the type of activity, whether it was a community-based XYZ, but again, we have a very consistent process that we follow when determining the amount of a reduction, not a 100% waiver.
And I would like to see that in writing, because I think concerns that I've actually had is certain nonprofits are not paying anything, and some are paying, you know, 50%, and others are not, and how do we determine that? And what I would like to see is that we create, and I'm not, I'm just a suggestion, that you guys create something that maybe if it's a nonprofit with zero to a one to 15 members, this is the cost, 15 to 50 members, there's the cost. Therefore, we can't look like we're just being biased to certain nonprofits to make sure that we're being fair to all of them. I'd like to see something like that created. And I know it may not be for this year, but at least for next year, we can consider making sure we have something that we can use and something that we also place on the website, so if they're interested, they can just go right on there and say, okay, I'm a nonprofit, I have 20 members, this is what I'm using it for, and then we can specify whether it's school-related or it's a community-related, and the cost, if you can consider that. Thank you.
Ms. Porter?
Yes, so, along that lines, I was hoping that we would see the fee schedule tonight so that it would assist in some of our conversations, but also with what Dr. Scott said, if we could include the timeframe too. I know we received some conversation, well, we received some comments about some of our youth organizations using facilities for practice and so forth, and maybe their practice is one hour, but yet the fee schedule, in their opinion, seemed to be really, really large, like for an all-day event, and it didn't seem not even practical for a team or a group of students practicing for one hour on a track or in a gym. And then also, the, I believe it was for voting, I think there was a concern about using our facilities for voting, maybe at one point?
We don't charge.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't charge for voting for the facility. I think there was a question about custodial ser... Yeah, the custodial services, which we can't waive because it's a contractor service.
We can't waive the custodial, okay, okay. So, maybe if we could see that in writing and also how it's presented to the community so that when they come to us with their complaints, it makes it very difficult to have that conversation, us not having it in front of us either to be able to... Because what we take is what they give us, and it usually sounds like it's pretty stressed, it's a stressful amount for the organization that's coming to board members.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Dennis?
Yes, so, when we're looking at this policy, you know, our students, athletes, our bands, our art performers, our athletic boosters and stuff like that, I know that a lot of them have tried to do things in the past, and it's hard with the fee schedule. But also, you know, in here, it's talking about the waivers and things like that. When I, when I see our school district and it can directly benefit our students and our employees, it's hard to put a price on that, considering that we've already paid for it, and most of the times we say, well, you know, we gotta have this person come clean up. The fact of the matter is, when we're looking at it, most of the coaches that are trying to do this, they're the ones that are cleaning up to begin with. Those coaches, the athletic directors, they take pride in their fields and their gyms and things like that, and the booster clubs are also helping. And I think if we find a way to build this so that our clubs and whatnot can use these at a really cut-cost facility-wise, maybe that they can find a way to raise more money. That money can go towards their programs so that we don't have to put as much money into it from the district side. So, we need to find that balance there, that, you know, that's for our band directors and things like that as well. I would really like to see our principals, our athletic directors, and our band directors come together and see what they really need to grow those programs versus us, you know, trying to make money off of them. I would really like to see what they're looking for in the rental process there.
Okay, so you are suggesting that we have higher rate reductions for those organizations than we currently do?
Yes, I mean, if we're having a club that's trying to do something afterwards and they're getting charged, I think if it's directly involved with those students at that school, I think it should be next to nothing, considering those kids are the one cleaning up their ball field. That coach is out there doing most of the work. I know for a fact that when one of the fields got rented, the coach actually went during the summer to ensure that the field didn't get messed up. The coach didn't get paid for that. That was the pride in that field that they took. So, if they're doing that, then we need to look at really how to do that. I mean, look at how the bash is done at Ridgeview. That is a perfect, good example of how they're utilizing the system for them to make money. I think if we can get it across the board, and that goes for everything, that's not just athletes, that's for our art performance programs too. Anything that's directly benefiting these schoolchildren, we got to find a way to make it happen.
Thank you.
Ms. Porter?
When we receive the fee schedule, I'd also like to see, I know there's some sort of allotment of type of events that are for that particular school, like they're allowed to have two events that they don't have to pay for something. I wanna see that as well. I've heard some of that communication, and even, maybe that may relieve some of the stresses increasing the number of events that each school is allowed to have. increasing the number of events that each school is allowed to have. And then whatever the guidelines are for it, I'd like to look at that as well, i.e. the BASH. I know that's one of theirs that they claim, I'm not sure if there's another one, but things that bring things to our district and help us by bringing more spectators and so forth for our student athletes are things that there are of concern. I know we had this year, there was a student who had gone to the MBA or something along those lines that did a, to help our students, they did a camp for our high schoolers and didn't charge those students. It was the best of the best in the South, state of South Carolina that came to the school for a camp and he brought on his teammates to help and former coaches of his and didn't ask for anything for those students. And that person was asked to pay to have their camp here. So, I don't know, just, I want to see what our schools could have as leverage to still have these events for our students. And I speak of sports just because that's off the top of my head, but I'm sure it applies across the board. If you have a, a specialty or a special performer that graduated from Richland too, we have an author that, you know, graduated from Richland too, if she wanted to do something in our district special for our students, she's gonna have to pay $500,000 to rent the space to do it and not ask the students for anything. So I think just looking at that and what we allow and how many events each school has, I think we need to evaluate that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I totally agree with that. And it's really hard because a lot of the things we see the other districts around us doing, and our children are having to go to that district in order to do the program, is it, it's kinda, to explain that to the parents, that hey, we got a policy and it doesn't, it kinda hurts us when it goes to certain things and the whole district and community concept. I, I think trying to bring the community together, we really need to look at it.
Thank you. Okay, oh, Ms. Williams.
I agree with everything that everyone had to say. My only concern would be, or my only ask would be, if we did charge for it, just to cover the cost of the people who have to work. Like, you know, like if we don't, we don't have to cover the cost of the facility, but we cover the cost of custodian. Like not asking for the vendor or the person to cover those costs of the, because we know that there, I don't know where we would get the money from to say that we're gonna comp the cost of, you know, the, you know, we can comp the cost of the facility because it's ours, but the labor that might be outside, like a custodian or the art staff that have to come and cut on the lights and, you know, all the things that, additional time outside on a, on a Saturday or something like that, but not to make a profit from it. So if we had to think about it, what are the ways that we could comp everything else but not make a profit? If we, if it is in-house when it comes to certain things, unless it's bringing in tons of tons of money for our district and, and charges that they're having, but if we're having someone come host something that they're doing for free, just the basic bare minimum for what it would cost for IT and stuff, because, you know, that's their time and efforts.
Thank you.
Okay, and what I'm hearing is, is that we would like, and I just want to reiterate, a fee schedule, like what the fee schedule looks like and the, what the allotments would look like, correct? Is that, is that right? Okay, and then is that something that you guys have that is easily accessible or will it take like a week or two?
I think that would take a long time.
Okay, so then is, is it possible that we can get it in our, our, when does our next board brief come out?
Comes out Friday.
Okay, well then next, next board brief, not this one, but next week?
Okay. It's due, to, to neutral on Wednesday.
Okay, perfect.
To get to you on Friday.
Okay, so then, yeah, the next one, not this one, but the next one, if we could get that in our board brief. And then maybe we can have a future discussion around this again.
And Madam Chair, also, I think something else that we'll need to have that next conversation is maybe even the cost for the facility, like to, with the electricity and so forth, like to just look at that as we can make that consideration, to know how much would we have to pay in the long run. And then my question would be, so that we can be prepared for that, is how do we monitor our, our use of energy within our buildings and do we make an attempt to save on those costs and what, how do we go about doing that? I know that there's software out there to do that, where you can save millions of dollars by monitoring your energy use. So I want to see what efforts are being made for that, because if that's not done to, to the highest extent, then maybe we could use funds from those savings to cover the cost of that. So I just want to make sure we have an in-depth conversation, so if we could be prepared with that information as well.
Perfect. So once we get the board brief, then we can look at our schedule and see where we can insert that, maybe as, you know, one of our items that we can have, like in the workshop portion of that, because I do believe that is something that is on the hearts of everybody here on the board to have a discussion and maybe even there's ways that with the partnerships that we have, we can figure out how to make this work, because it is kind of disheartening when we have like, you know, some of the track teams, things like that, that they may not necessarily, they're already helping, you know, children who are looking for places to go to be able to be a part of sports and keep them out of trouble. So we look forward to having that conversation and thank you all so much for that information. All right. Oh, oh, sorry, I'm sorry, Dr. Elkin Scott, you go ahead. Okay, just, yes, and if, yeah, board members, if we missed anything, if I missed anything or you heard something now, definitely send me an email with that and then we'll get it all put together as one big ask. Thank y'all. All right, so next up, we're gonna do our superintendent's report. This item is going to be where Dr. Moore will give us a report. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So tonight, we will be covering multiple topics. We'll be looking at the Performing Arts Center, our state-of-the-art facility. We'll also provide an update on the R2 Conference Center, as well as our special education update that we provide monthly and our monthly budget update. We always like to ground our, our work around our students and that's how we make our decisions in Richland School District too, because we are purpose-driven, so our students will be future-ready. We want each of our students to feel connected, engaged, supported, and achieving, and of course, our core values of belonging, learning, continuous improvement, and joy. So tonight, we're gonna start with an update on our Performing Arts Center, which is a state-of-the-art facility. And to kick it off, we have a wonderful video to start with. Matthew, I'm struggling with the buttons. So as we begin to talk about our Performing Arts Center, I do want our performing arts team that's here in the audience to please stand up, stand up. Thank you for being here tonight. So I know the board is very familiar with this, but the Richland Two Performing Arts Center broke ground on September the 27th of 2022, and it had its building dedication ceremony on November the 14th of 2024 during the State of the District address. The grand opening actually took place on December the 3rd of 2024. Now, what you see on the slide are some statistical highlights from December 2024 to June 2025 this year, and we'll talk about beyond later in the presentation. But between the date of the general open, grand opening on December the 3rd of 2024 and the close of the fiscal year, which was the end of June of 2025, we were occupied with 89 events, which directly impacted our students, because it included student events, district events, as well as rental events that we put on. Altogether, this took 110 days, out of the 140 days were possible, because remember, we didn't open until grand opening was in December. Now, with that grand opening in December, we have served up to the end of the fiscal year 4,600 students, plus we generated 114,987 in rental fees. Now, through this purpose-driven approach, students were prepared for their future careers if they have an interest in the arts. In addition to providing the facility for students to have performances, they also include a teaching portion around the technical aspect of the performing arts. And that is something that was near and dear to my heart and I am so glad that under Paula's leadership, they have brought. This facility has also served more than 15,000 community members. So our Performing Arts Center is working to be able to operate with a sustainable and strategic business model, generating revenue while serving the community. By offering facility rentals, providing access to our high-quality skilled staff, and leveraging our, our state-of-the-art equipment, the PAC not only supports, but generates revenue. And as you can see, in six months, that's how much they have generated. Now, the operating cost for our facility from July 1st of 2024 to June 30th of 2025, the PAC spent $556,499.52. Now, this cost does include the startup cost for supplies, equipment, as well as our staff. Now, as you can see there, I'm not sure what happened with that, building on last year's success, our Performing Arts Center is projecting growth across every key metric, including the number of Richland Two students that are served, the district costs of saving that money from students not having to go places, other places to rent facilities, you see that displayed here. But our operating cost was $575,000, and that does leave a gap, and that's what's supposed to show there, of $430,000. But I do want to stress a point here, and you'll see this on the next slide. While there is a gap in what we expended versus what we've brought in, remember that the Performing Arts Center was only open for a short period of time. For FY 2025-2026 school year, we are currently operating at 79% capacity, with new events being added daily. Currently, events are scheduled on 142 of the 100 school days, 180 school days, often with multiple events occurring on the same day, reflecting the PAC's growing demand and community engagement. Now, there is an additional 185 days available, and so to anyone out there in the public that is interested in renting the facility, we will be more than happy to have you come and experience this wonderful state-of-the-art facility. What are our goals and what are we looking for to achieve in the future? Our goals are twofold, to expand opportunity and experiences for our students, as well as to strengthen revenue generation that ensures a sustainable business model. Over the next three to five years, we're committed to advancing these five priorities that you see, securing both educational excellence and long-term financial stability. So under each one of these, for example, support student learning and achievement, the position of the PAC has had an extension, is an extension of the classroom by providing high-quality spaces and resources for performance exhibitions, as well as hands-on technical learning opportunities, because we actually have a stagecraft facility in the back of the PAC, so students can learn the art of stagecraft in addition to the students that want to be on the front part of the building on the stage. We are working to cultivate partnerships and revenues, and we're doing that with our local arts organization, universities, and businesses to expand opportunities for students while also creating sustainable revenue streams through rentals and sponsorships. We're providing professional quality experiences by delivering state-of-the-art technical and artistic support so that students, staff, and community members experience productions at a professional standard, raising pride, joy, and visibility for Richland too. Our plan is to maximize facility utilization to ensure that the PAC is consistently and strategically used with high percentage of available days booked, balancing school needs with rental opportunities that generate revenue. And last but not least, foster community engagement by building stronger ties with our families and the wider community by hosting events that bring people together, including school performances, community theater, cultural showcases, and district-wide celebrations. We truly believe that this will be a pride and joy, one of the shining stars of our district. Next, we'll talk about one of our other pride and joys, and that is the Richland Two Conference Center. So you're very familiar with the Richland Two Conference Center because it's been in service for nine years, and we have our awesome team of Jackie and Dakota, please stand up, who manage that facility for us. It's roughly 14,000 square feet, includes meeting spaces as well as our upstairs area, seating up to 900 guests. We annually have 200 to 400ths events annually. And in a district to, in addition to the events that are internal, which we host multiple numerous district events, including professional development, our meetings for the district are held here, we no longer rent any outside space for meetings or district events. So we're using our conference center for that. We also have our external events, which includes retail, banking, and medical service conferences, South Carolina state agencies and organizations, weddings, and international cultural events. Some of our current clients include Publix, Dollar General, BCBS, the Department of Education, and it just goes on and on and on. And so while you see that chart represents our number of external and internal clients, please note that our internal is about two times more than our external clients. So we use this space quite frequently. Our standard pricing for our events is listed on the slide, and it ranges from 500 to 2,000. Now, the total events decreased, but the revenue has increased, indicating improved pricing and efficiency. Previously, our discounts were from 50% to 100% off. This was not a sustainable business model. So if we were not supplying all of the discounts, we could have made over a million dollars on the conference center. We have made an adjustment to our discounting, discount pricing, and as of July 1st of 2025, we now provide discounts, only two discounts, and that's 10% and 50%. We have also begun to look at our marketing and they're doing a refresh, expanding the advertising to include theaters, billboards, magazines, and refreshing the brand by updating our logo and materials. And if you attend the movie theater in Sand Hill, you will see our advertisement with every movie that's on the screens in that facility. Let's just look briefly at the revenue. Please note that as you see, the revenue for 2025-2026 does include signed contracts that we have in place that are. does include signed contracts that we have in place that are long-term contracts, as well as new contracts. So expenses for FY twenty-five, twenty-six were calculated from previous FY twenty-four, twenty-five numbers with a ten percent markup. Because we have not extended the full year, we made an estimate based upon what we've done previously. As I've already stated, our discounts were updated July first of two thousand and twenty-five. Now, with the reoccurring contracts that are already in place, we will honor those contracts as we would. But once those contracts reach their expiration, we'll renegotiate them with the new discount rate. So considerations for you to consider with the deficit is to go back to the previous slide where I talked about the number of internal events, as well as the impact of the partner discounts, as, also including restrictions on rental days available. So for example, we do not rent the facility on Tuesdays that are board meeting days, which directly impacts our ability to host multiple-day conferences. Now, while we recognize that this is one of the limitations we have, it's one that we all agree needs to be done because we have internal things that need to take place. So I just want the public to understand that. This facility is here to not only meet the community's needs, but also primarily the district's needs for a quality place for us to do our business. Now, with that, we are looking to increase our sustainability, which means increasing our revenue streams. We are coming into celebration season with the holiday season, and the conference center will be booked for that. Also, once the wedding season kicks up, we do a lot of weddings in this building, as well as we are hosting school events. So for example, proms are hosted here too for schools. Our smart goal is to make sure that we do our marketing refresh, so we're going to expand our advertising. We're going to refresh the brand and update the logos. But as you can see, we want to make sure that we have a competitive pricing structure, and to do that, we're going to be offering bundle packages. Jackie has been going out into community, into the community and pricing what other places charge to ensure that we are competitive with our pricing structure. Next, we will move on to our special education, staffing, and compliance. So as you can see, we have filled twenty-two of the twenty-nine positions, and we are very excited about that because these positions will enable our schools to be more effective in meeting the state student-teacher ratio and service delivery standards for our students. We are in the midst of a hiring process for the compliance office professional positions, and our special education division is conducting a district-wide staffing review to ensure personnel are allocated efficiently and effectively. The last time this was done was several years before I came on board, and Ms. McLaughlin is conducting that as we speak. She is always working. So what are we focused on with our educational compliance? And let me just remind, I know the board is familiar with this, but for the public, to please keep in mind when we talk about compliance, compliance in special education, there is no middle ground. It's either you are in compliance or you are not in compliance. It is zero to one hundred percent, period. There's no room in between. And so we have identified five key areas that we are working on. The first one is our foundational compliance work, and that's primarily focused on building a strong foundation for the compliance system. Now, this includes clarifying roles, establishing processes, gathering baseline data, and providing early training for staff to ensure the fidelity to legal requirements and district policies. School visits. Our executive director and directors are visiting every sped classroom. This allows us to see practices firsthand, understand teacher and student needs, and provide direct support and guidance. And I can tell you, and Mr. Trapp can verify this because we visited some schools together, and we went into a sped class, and the first thing they talked about was the fact that the district had been there and had conversations with them, and we are very excited about that. Roles and responsibilities have been discussed and reviewed across all special education groups. You've heard me say this in the past, but in particular for sped, job description updates are in progress, which will help clarify expectations and ensure that staff have support needed to implement programs effectively. We're also conducting a staffing review, or it has been completed, we conducted a staffing review of the district-level special education staffing. And is, and we're now reviewing the staffing at the school level to ensure personnel are aligned with school needs and stu, student support priorities. And last but not least, we have ongoing training and support. The current compliance of, office professionals have been trained in Ed Plan, South Carolina, and are collaborating with schools to schedule annual IEP reviews and ensure deadlines are met. Monthly LEA training with administrators have started and continue to focus on accountability, compliance, and instructional practices. So we are basically looking at every aspect of our special education program to ensure that we are in compliance, but more importantly, meeting the needs of this growing population of students that we are here to serve. We will now transition to our monthly budget update. So today, I will present several documents to report the district's financial activity through the August thirty-first, through August thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-five. Now, this first page that you will see, and for the public, this is available to you for you to scroll and to look at. It relates to the local property tax revenue that we've received. So up until this point, we've received eight million, three hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars, or six point two percent of anticipated revenue. As I mentioned last month, we typically start receiving property tax release revenue in October. Now, this is the sales tax revenue we receive to replace revenue we would have received if it were still allowed to tax owner-occupied property, better known as Act three sixty-eight. When we consider revenue from interests and other sources like facility rentals, we've received eight million, nine hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and three dollars, or four point five percent of anticipated local revenue. As it relates to revenue from state sources, we have received twenty-six million, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars, or sixteen percent of our anticipated revenue for the year. When we consider transfers from the State Education Improvement Act funds to the general fund, we've received five million, forty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars at the end of August, which equates to sixteen point one percent of anticipated revenue for the year. We've expended forty million, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars, or nine point seven percent of the general fund budgeted expenditures through the end of August. Transfers to other funds, like our eleven point five million for capital projects, will be done in upcoming months. Now, these charts track the revenue discussed on the prior page. So this is the revenue that we have received through August over three fiscal years. And what you will note on these charts is that our state revenue and transfers are fairly consistent from year to year at around sixteen percent. The anticipated federal portion is for impact aid for our military-connected students. Now, this chart tracks expenditures through August across various categories over a three-year period. Please note that salary and fringes are consistent year to, over year at around nine percent. As it relates to repairs, supplies, and other expenditures, you'll notice that fiscal year twenty-six is much lower than previous fiscal years because we've changed our practices and are now recording insurance premiums and software licenses each month as the expenditure occurs, and not all upfront. I just want to note for the Publix information, the information on this slide is from the unaudited numbers because we are currently undergoing our audit, and that won't be concluded until later this year, this fiscal, in December, November, December timeframe. So for the month ending August thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-five, our total fund balance, general fund, unaudited as a percent of the general fund budget, the district is required to report this monthly fund balance numbers to the South Carolina Department of Education. You will know, you will notice that August of two thousand and twenty-five, our fund balance is calculated to be one hundred and seventeen million, seven hundred and seventeen dollars in, seven, one million, seven, one hundred and seventeen million, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars. Now, this presents twenty-eight percent, represents twenty-eight percent of our general fund budget and equates to approximately three point four months of expenditures. Please keep in mind with our state, with our fund balance, the state law requires at least eight point three three percent, which is one month. Board policy requires at least sixteen point sixty-six percent, which is two months, and our bond rating agencies require at least twenty percent, which is two point four months. So Richland School District's two total fund balance, general fund unaudited as a percent of the general fund budget as of July thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-five. So you're going to see in this chart that it provides the total fund balance as a percentage over four-year period from FY twenty-three to FY twenty-six. And as I reported last month, our fund balance normally is lowest around October or November, and it's highest in the third quarter of the fiscal year around January or February. And that is because, remember, money may not be coming in. So grants that we receive from the federal government, money from the state, money from the county doesn't come in all, every month at the same amount. So that amount fluctuates. We use our fund balance to offset those costs, and then once that money comes in, it's transferred, and that's why you'll see the fund balance goes up around January and February. The point of keeping our fund balance where we need is because it not only helps us offset those numbers that fluctuate, but it also helps us to prepare for a rainy day if we have a need. Within the total fund balance, next slide, please, we have assigned fund balance, our unassigned fund balance, and our non-spendable fund balance. Now, the assigned fund balance represents the funding the board has approved to designate for specific purposes. So when the board approved the budget in June of two thousand and twenty-five, there were items that were specifically identified and approved by the board that would be coming out of the fund balance, and that is the assigned fund balance. This includes the five million dollar set aside over a few years to provide, to provide the balance back to the budget for the funding that was transferred to complete our capital projects. The non-spendable relates to items that are considered prepaid assets, like insurance premiums and software licenses. As it relates to the district's general liability insurance premiums, when we make the cash payment in July, we must record the insurance as a prepaid asset. We have to reserve that asset in our fund balance as non-spendable each month. So we record one-twelfth of the premium as an expense in our income statement. The unassigned fund balance is available for any purpose, but primarily will be used to ensure that we are in compliance with the state require, state law requirements, board policy, and bond requirements. And of course, if we have a need on a rainy day, that we would need to cover unexpected expenditures. Let's transition now to our tax collections because, once again, these numbers will fluctuate because this is what we receive from our monthly property tax revenue. And this is the revenues, revenue that is generated by the three point one seven, three one, three hundred and seventeen point one mil rate that is included in this amount, as well as the six mil increase adopted by county council. So six million, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars was received from the county treasurer for property taxes in August for a grand total of eight million, three hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars, which has been collected year-to-date. And once again, remember, those numbers do fluctuate. Next, we will look at our investment summary. So our current investment accounts are listed, as well as the balances for the end of August. Please keep in mind that most of our funds are kept in the South Carolina local investment pool. We have our CDs for as many years, but next year, remember, our plan is to catch those CDs before they renew and reinvest those funds in the L-GIP to get a higher return. And then the last slide is the board's budget, which is five hundred and ninety-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars. To date, ninety, ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars have been expended on salary, membership dues, the board retreat, and safety monitors. There's also a fifty thousand, four hundred dollar purchase order for South Carolina School Board Association dues. And board members, as always, our goal is to ensure that our students feel that they are connected, engaged, supported, and achieving. And with that, we will open it up for questions or discussion.
Okay, board members, I'd like to start with asking questions. If you have any questions about, let's start with any questions about PAC. Anybody? Okay, all right. And then, did we have any questions around conference center? Okay, all right. Any questions around budget for October? Okay, all right. Oh, and sped, I'm sorry. Any questions around sped? Okay, if you do have any questions, you know, that may come up after, you know, this discussion, then of course, send them to me, and we'll make sure we get those answered. All right, all right. Well, next up is, we'll take a look at our agenda, item twelve point O. Take a look at the draft agenda for October twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, regular scheduled board meeting. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is October twenty-eighth. Thanksgiving will be here very, very soon. We will start with our standard call to order at five thirty P.M., followed by the welcome and pledge of allegiance, move then to the approval of the agenda. We'll release to executive session, and then in executive session, we will talk about student admission request into the district's adult education program, employment recommendations and certified releases, released back to public session at six thirty P.M. We'll move to consent agenda, which would include, which will include approval of consent agenda, approval of the minutes from previous meeting, classified employment releases, and in-district transfers. Next, we will have a special recognition, the South Carolina School Board Association Boardmanship Institute recognition, followed by public participation, and then move to voting on executive session items, which would include copy of the student admission request into the district's adult education program, employment recommendations and certified releases, and as needed for items discussed in executive session. We'll move to section nine, unfinished business action requested. The board will look at the policy adoption for policy BEA, live streaming board meetings, policy revision, policy GCLE, unencumbered time, policy revision IHAA, English reading, writing, language arts education, policy ILBB, state assessment programs, and approval of the elementary attendance line adjustments. We'll then move to new We'll then move to new business, no action requested. The board will see the 2024-2025 achievement report for high schools. We'll then have our review of the draft agenda for the November 11th regularly scheduled board meeting, move to our if-needed items of public participation, executive session, voting on executive session items, and conclude with adjournment.
Okay, board members, are there any revisions or additions you would like to see made to the next meeting agenda or a future agenda?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Elkin Scott?
Yes, I, I have two. One is, I would love to have Principal Alan Wolf from the Richland Two Student Innovation Center to come in and give us a presentation on, and it doesn't have to be next meeting, it can be, you know, the first of the year, just to give us an update on what they offer here in Richland Two, but also to talk about some opportunities for some new initiatives. And if you've been around for a long time, you know my initiatives are bringing new opportunities for our students because this building was designed for our students and we do have the space. So I'd like for us to talk about new opportunities that can take place at the next school year, like cybersecurity, adding barbering here, because we have so many students who want to take barbering and cosmetology but cannot because it's not offered at their schools. I would love to see us giving the students an opportunity to do that as well as CNA. So I'd love for Mr. Wolf to come and just have a conversation with us and we can have a discussion so we can make sure that we are providing a great opportunity for all of our students. That's number one. And number two, I don't even know if this is possible, but I'm going to put it out there, I had an opportunity to talk with a few grandparents. And you guys, if you know me, you know how I love my grandmother and I was actually raised by my grandmother. And I was actually going to one of the games and I saw one of the grandparents and she actually lives in Richland One, but have kids who attend, grandkids who attend schools in Richland Two and they have to pay. Now, if she attends Richland One games, she can have that ID card and can get into those games free. What I would like to see Richland Two, because we always like to do, be the first and we always want to make sure we're doing what's right for all community leaders, I would love to see us be able to offer that senior discount card to all senior citizens. Therefore, if you live in Richland One, but you have grandkids or great-grandkids in Richland Two, you're still able to come and support them at our games here. So I don't know how we can do it. I'll turn to Dr. Franklin and Dr. Moore. If you guys can kind of come up with something or think about something and get back with us because, you know, most of the time, senior citizens are on a fixed income and they do want to support all of their grandkids. So let's have it where they're able to, whether they live in Richland One or Richland Two, still able to get one of our ID cards as well and be able to support their grandkids here. Those are the two things. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, now we will go to, uh, let's go to our board and superintendent comments and we will start with Ms. Porter.
I just want to say that I had the pleasure of being at Forest Lake today and with Principal Jackson, who made the announcement of the Blue Ribbon Lighthouse School and I'm extremely proud of their community that they've established there. And a lot has happened in the short amount of time at Forest Lake with their new building and so forth, and I think they're doing a beautiful job. And then I also had the pleasure of visiting Joseph Kill's Elementary School. And what I saw was very much focused students working really hard and I particularly spent some time in a kindergarten classroom. And I will say that the procedures in that little classroom with those little people, I mean, they were so impressive and they had all their stations going and a hundred percent focused. And I don't even think they knew I was in the room, but it was like clockwork and it was a pleasure to see. And I also enjoyed the cafeteria food while I was there as well. It was really good and I could see what my kids were talking about. So it was a good time. So thank you for having me and it was a great first quarter of the year. I think we've done a lot of good work and our students are happy. I think they're tired this fall break. I saw a lot of tired faces, but they've been working really hard. Thank you.
Okay, up next, Mr. Trapp.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to mention one thing I had, did last week. Last week, I attended the Midlands Regional Talent Summit that was presented by Midlands Technical College. And I just wanted to really thank Midlands Tech for the, for putting this event on. I found it very beneficial. I really had a lot of, a lot of things that made me think about what we do here and what we might can do possibly better. The one takeaway that I, that I took from this event is that we really have to provide a lot of opportunities for our students to discover their talents. Because when you get down to it, that's really, really what, what we need to do with the education we receive. We need to find what we're good at and ideally, that's a good career opportunity. One thing I would add to that is it's important for a person to learn the limitations too because you, you don't want, we, the, one of the worst things you can do is pursue something that you, you, you aren't good at and then a few years down the road, you realize you've got to switch occupations. So really, that's why I think as a school district, it's, it's important that we do things and we do a lot of things. In fact, our very own Jennifer Kane was there as one, one of the panelists in one of the conversations and it was good to hear her talk about the things we do here in Richland Two. I really feel we're ahead of the game in Richland Two, but I really hope that we can, when we see opportunities where we can improve what we do, I hope we do because we, we want these, we want our children to leave here and either go to college, go to the military, or go directly into a career and be successful and be happy. It's one, you know, those are two separate things sometimes. And it was really good to, to attend that and, and listen to somebody who's an expert speak about that. Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Trying to keep it brief, but I have a little bit to say tonight. So I just want to say, over the past month, I've had the opportunity to experience several areas of our district's core value. So thank you to everyone for allowing all of our students to be seen and experience belonging through the Hispanic Heritage Celebration and our Community Resource Night hosted by Richland Two, inter-agency team, and Volk Rehab. That was just such an amazing experience and wish it could, you know, just trying to get more parents out and to provide and see those resources that are being offered. I also had the opportunity to experience joy by attending several, you know, Friday night football games with my son and then Westwood also hosted a cheer competition. And one of my biggest areas of joy that I was able to experience as well was being able to step out of my comfort zone in an area that I'm working on in public speaking. And so I was, had the opportunity to speak to a group of middle school young ladies at Dent Middle School who were inducted into the Jules Mentoring Group. And it was just such a joy to see the smiles on their faces and to see how much they want for their future and to know that we have a great impact on that. Last, I experienced learning and continuous improvement via the witnessing the, the Red Hawks Ready to Work MOA Signing Day. Thank you to the Red Hawks and men and teachers and staff for believing in our future and preparing them for the workforce and beyond, similar to what Mr. Trapp said, because we don't want to wait until it's too late to determine what we like to do in our future and discovering the talents now. I saw, I, you know, unfortunately, I had to attend a funeral of a former student. However, what also brought me joy in that moment was seeing one of the students that came before us, the other board meeting, talk about his experiences as an intern at a funeral home. And when I saw him, I just smiled and I went up to him and said, "Thank you for all that you do." And he's really thoroughly enjoying the work that he's doing and getting the experience. So just to see a current student still working in that area while he's in school and to see that he's now found his career path and him, you know, working in action just brought me joy in a moment of, you know, sorrow. So again, thank you to everyone and all the work that you're doing in the district. Have an amazing remainder of the week and happy fall.
Yes, happy fall. Mr. Dennis?
All right. So I wanted to thank all the presenters tonight. Thank you, everybody, for coming up. Fall to me is, is the family time of the year, where we get together, we get to do a lot of things and I'm really proud when I go out to the state fair because I get to see a lot of hard work out there. And I'm gonna, took my own family's horn for a little bit, but my wife took first place in the state fair cake decorating. My daughter took second place and she also took first place in cooking for her mint chocolate chips and the candy decorated tasted cupcakes. But while I'm there, I always look for other people in Richland Two, our students and teachers. And I wanted to highlight Amea, I want to say it's Kessler, from Katobar Trail for winning the Carolina RIN Award for Student Art at the state fair. That was pretty impressive. And then I also found out one of our coaches here in Richland Two that's a, up at one of the elementary schools, I want to say his girlfriend, I don't know where she works at, but I think she's in Richland Two and I found out she won first place in the pound cake tasting. So, yeah, we, we're doing it good. But going on to that, you know, I want to just say, if you're out there and you're entering the state fair, please, please enter under the school district because it's great to highlight our district in that with all the art that we have going on here. Also, let everybody know, it is choice season, so November the 10th through the December 19th, you got school choice. Fifty Shades of Pink event is happening the 20th October here at R2I2. Boo at Two's on the 24th of October. And I want to thank all the board members and administration for the past few weeks. My family had some little help things with my father and thank you all for your help and support through that. So thank you all. That's all I got.
Dr. Elkin Scott?
First, I want to start with saying happy National Principal Month. Kudos to all of the fabulous and the wonderful principals for all the things that you have done and the things that you continue to do. But we have a lot of principals who actually are now working here at the district level with us, so we want to say kudos to you guys too. And if you don't mind, just stand and if you were once a principal in Richland School District Two, because we want to give a shout out to you guys too. So please stand. Look at that, look at that. We promote within, so congratulations to you guys too. And also want to say thank you to board member Sandra Jackson, who is a board member at Midlands Tech. She was so graciously to give every one of our schools a Midlands Tech pennant and stickers. So all of our schools, elementary, middle, and high, you are now going to have a Midlands Tech pennant because they are our partners. And she had a chance to see me highlight some other colleges and just reminded me with the little kindness that, you know, we're your partners. Can we get some? And I said, "Sure, make sure you send it to us and we'll get it out there." So thank you to Sandra Jackson, I'm for that. Also, want to remind everyone that it is the Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So if you know anyone who has experienced cancer, please show them some love and some kindness and support. Do the Breast Cancer Walk or whatever you feel like you need to do. And I think Mr. Dennis talked about, you know, wearing your pink for the event that we're going to have here in Richland School District Two. And as you know, I would end with, I'm representing Westwood this evening. So, a little bit about Westwood. It continues to be an exciting season of excellence, elite performance, and empowers learning at Westwood High School, where the scholars rise each day with resilience, integrity, scholarship, and engagement under the energetic leadership of Ms. Tamika Nicholson and her enchanting administrative team. Westwood High students are truly thriving academically. Their most recent end-of-course benchmarks demonstrate significant progress across multiple content areas and they are very proud to share that the Algebra I scholars are leading the pack, soaring at the top as evidence of the strong instruction and dedication of their teachers. Through focus PLC collaboration and elite instructional strategies, their staff remains committed to visible, visible learning and continuous improvement for every student. The teaching staff is also preparing the scholars for life beyond the classroom. Through their Red Hawks, Red Hawks Ready to Work Sign-Sill-Delivered Initiative, fifteen students recently signed memorandums of agreement for internships with community partners, including SCE TV, Lexington Medical Center, Chick-fil-A, y'all, Chick-fil-A pay almost $20 an hour, but local dentists, veterinarians, and banks. These experiences are giving the students the skills and confidence to graduate enlisted, enroll, or employed. And I like to add entrepreneurship as well. The Red Hawks are also at selling beyond academics. The athletic teams are competing with passion and discipline and the fine arts program continue to shine with several student pieces currently on display at the South Carolina State Fair. Although the Red Hawks give back seriously by students, the students are volunteering throughout the Midlands, building character, leadership, and responsible citizenship. Therefore, at Westwood High School, excellence on purpose isn't just their theme, it's their way of life. The Red Hawks are preparing scholars who are not only achieving great things today, but who are destined to lead tomorrow on purpose, with purpose, for life beyond the castle. Go Red Hawks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And the Red Hawks retained the Battle of the Axe. They won the axe at their football between, don't look at me, Matt, between Lifewood High School and Westwood. And Ms. Nash and I were just talking, board members, how a lot of the stuff we wanted to talk about, you've already touched on, but we're gonna, I'm gonna highlight a few things anyway because this is Principal Month and we want to honor and celebrate our principals. So I want to take a moment to recognize and celebrate some of the most important people in this district. As a former or recovering high school principal myself, I know the work that they do every single day. And we are blessed with extraordinary leaders who set the tone, inspire a positive school culture, and ensure that every student, and for those of you that know me, you know I don't like that word, every, it's each student, that each student feels that they belong, they are learning, they are experiencing joy each and every day. Our principals lead with heart, vision, and dedication and their impact reaches far beyond the walls of their schools. So from all of us in Richland Two to our amazing leaders, thank you for the difference you make in the lives of our students, families, staff, and community every single day. Ms. Williams touched on our resource, resource fair, which was awesome for our families. I learned a few things that I didn't know about what we offer in our community, like home health care. You don't have to be a student with special needs to receive home health care in your house if you have a need. There was so much great information and when we have our next one, I would encourage our entire community to please come out and support that. And thank you to our sped department for that exceptional work. Mr. Jackson was here earlier to talk about the Blue Ribbon Lighthouse and it was a wonderful event. People may not realize, but this is a national recognition celebrating excellence in student achievement, school culture, and community engagement. It is the highest level that you can receive. We also know that our choice fair is coming up, parents. So I encourage families to mark your calendars for the 2025 R2 Choice Fair happening. Put it on your calendar, November 10th and November 12th at R2I2. This is a wonderful opportunity to explore the many programs, academies, and learning pathways that we offer in Richland Two and to find the right fit for your students' future. For more information, please go to our website of www.richland2.org/choice. Parents, also, report card time, yay! I know the students aren't excited, but I want to give you a quick reminder, parents, you should be on the lookout for the first nine weeks' report card coming home this week. This is an important milestone in the school year and I encourage families to celebrate their child's progress and partner with teachers to keep the momentum going. Also, don't forget, we do have Boo at Two coming up. I will not tell you what my costume is, but just know that Jackie and Dakota have provided me with this outfit. So please come out and support and we want to know what Mr. Trapp will be wearing, but he will surprise us. Want to also just echo what Dr. Scott said, domestic violence awareness- Want to also just echo what Dr. Scott said, Domestic Violence Awareness Month is this month of October, and we will have our Purple Up Day this Friday on October 17th. This is also Breast Cancer Awareness Month. As a survivor myself, I always appreciate the fact that we honor and celebrate those of us who have gone through that journey, and our families that have supported us, as well as our communities. Our District Pink Out Day will be next Tuesday on October 21st, so purple on Friday, pink on Tuesday. And with that, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, so, because we hadn't had a meeting in quite some time, a few weeks back, I was at the University of South Carolina Gamecocks game, and one of our teachers here sang the National Anthem, and I can't remember her name, because it was in my notes, but it was absolutely beautiful, and so it was great to hear Richland II's name and somebody from here being on such like, you know, a big stage, and I think that was one of the weeks that they broadcast on one of those sports channels. I don't really watch sports, okay? But I stood up for that, and I, you know, it was just amazing, and it was wonderful, and I cheered really loudly afterwards. So thank you to everyone who came tonight, everyone who presented. I want to give a special shout-out to our board members, because they have, like, really hit the ground running and are doing a lot of amazing work on committees and things like that, and just the ideas and innovative, so I just want to say thank you to all, you all. We had a parliamentary training the other night, which was both informative and hilarious. So hopefully, we have learned enough to just be parliamentary dangerous enough. But it was a great time, and so I want to thank Callan for that. And then, I think, yeah, and then Forest Lake, congratulations on all your success, and thank you to everybody who watched online. We didn't get out here at 8:00, but we did get you out before 8:30, so we were holding strong. So with that, can I have a motion for adjournment? Not everybody at once.
Madam Chair, I move that. We adjourn the October 14th meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Williams and seconded by Mr. Dennis to adjourn the October, what date is it? 13th, 14th, 2025 regularly scheduled board meeting. All those in favor, raise your right hand. This meeting is adjourned.